Good evening. This March 8, 2018, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Laurel Ridge Elementary School Chorus under the direction of Jessica Stowe and Jan Smith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(Singing) 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 (Singing)
Thank you very much Laurel Ridge Elementary School Chorus. That was wonderful. And thank you, parents, for bringing your children tonight. We very much enjoyed their singing. Next is certification of closed-meeting compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on March 8, 2018, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Is there a motion? Move by Ms. Corbett Sanders, second by Ms. Evans. All those in favor? That is unanimous with Mr. Moon, Ms. Schultz, and Mr. Wilson away from the table. Thank you. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. Mr. Wilson and Mr. Moon will be joining us shortly, as will Mrs. Schultz. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. And please turn off, with silence, your cell phone. I would like to take a moment to recognize, thank, and congratulate one of our technical support specialists in his retirement from FCPS. Chris Goddard has provided seamless support for our meetings for the past several years, and we couldn't have done it without him. You may have seen Chris kneeling behind the dais, assisting a board member with a laptop, an iPad, or an Internet issue. School Board meetings are organized well orchestrated events because of people like Chris Goddard. Congratulations, Chris, on your retirement. We thank you for your service, and we will miss you. Thanks, Chris. And of course, we love it when retirees come back and do a little contract work or volunteer. I call on Ms. Pedekan for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. March 2018 is Theater in Our Schools Month. The American Alliance for Theater Education has designated March as Theater in Our Schools Month to celebrate and increase public awareness of the benefits of theater education for youth development. The theme is fostering a culture of creativity. Theater education has the power to raise academic achievement and to stimulate innovation and creativity among students. The Alliance encourages citizens to celebrate the positive impact of theater in the classroom and to remember that all students should have access to quality theater education in their lives. March is also Music in Our Schools Month. March has officially been designated by the National Association for Music Education for the Observance of Music in Our Schools Month, the time of year when music education becomes the focus of schools across the nation. This year's theme is Music Inspires and is designated to highlight the importance of comprehensive sequential music education taught by exemplary music educators for all students, and to remind citizens that school is where all children should have access to music. It is also an opportunity for music teachers to bring their music programs to the attention of school and the community to display the benefits school music brings to students of all ages. March is also Youth Art Month. Our education contributes powerful educational benefits to all elementary and secondary students. Our education develops students' creative problem-solving and critical thinking abilities and teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities, and gives students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs, and brings to life what students learn in other subjects. The theme for Youth Art Month 2018 is Building Community Through Art. The Fairfax County School Board believes that support should be given to art teachers as they strengthen art education in our schools and communities, and all citizens are urged to take an interest in and give full support to quality school art programs for children and youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I will call on Ms. McLaughlin for recognition.
Thank you. On behalf of the Fairfax County School Board, it's my honor to share with my colleague Dalia Palczek in recognizing Frost Middle School's Millennium Falcons, an eighth-grade, first-year cyber patriot team which earned a first-place finish in Virginia's Open Division of the Air Force Association's National Youth Cyber Defense Competition. This year was the first time that the Millennium Falcons competed, and the second year that Frost Middle Schools teams have entered the competition. The Millennium Falcons excelled by winning first place, making it the second consecutive year that a Frost team has won this highest award at the state level. The National Youth Cyber Defense Competition is designed to excite, educate, and motivate students toward careers in cybersecurity and other STEM disciplines. The teams in this competition are challenged to find and resolve cybersecurity vulnerabilities in simulated environments. I wish to congratulate Coach Julie Healy, who led this team to their first state win, to the team mentor Vladimir Leonov, and to the Millennium Falcon team on your remarkable and well-deserved achievement. We wish you all the very best in your future endeavors, and at this time, we would like to invite the Frost Middle School Principal, Eric McCann, Coach Julie Healy, team mentor
And I will call on Ms. McLaughlin again for another recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a great evening for Braddock District Schools, although I do share Lake Braddock with my colleague Ms. Elizabeth Schultz. So, on behalf of my colleague Ms. Schultz and I and the Fairfax County School Board, it gives me great pleasure to honor the Lake Braddock Secondary School Concert Band, who has been selected to receive the 2017 Seddler Flag of Honor by the John Philip Sousa Foundation. This is only one of two FCPS schools to receive this recognition this year. It is a prestigious international award that recognizes high school concert bands of outstanding musical excellence. To name just a few of the accomplishments to meet the criteria for this award, the band had to achieve and maintain a high standard of excellence in the concert area over a period of several years. They had to perform and receive superior ratings at both the state, regional, and national levels, and students from the band had to participate in both district and all-state honor bands. I would like to congratulate Lake Braddock High School's band director, Michael Luli, middle school director Lou Bean, associate director Jason Miller, and the Lake Braddock Secondary Concert Band on your remarkable and well-deserved accomplishment. I personally look forward to seeing your recognition and flag ceremony by a member of the John Philip Sousa Executive Board at your spring concert in May. And now, I would like to invite the musical director, Michael Luli, along with the Lake
Okay, I will hand the gavel to Ms. Corbett Sanders so that I can read a resolution.[1054.66][1054.66](Laughter)
I call on Ms. Strauss for a resolution.
Thank you. We have three wonderful clerks that support our school board and make sure that we comply with all of the rules and regulations in Virginia and in Fairfax County. Our clerks are Arlene Mulberg, Bev Medea, and Anne Benedicto, and we are honoring them tonight with this resolution. Where a school board clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and where a school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and dispersments, and a record of all official acts, and where a school board clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of their county and city as may be required by the school board, and where a school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media, on behalf of the school board and the superintendent, as where a school board clerks in the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings, we only occasionally let them go home, where a school board clerks provide an invaluable service for school board members, superintendents, the VSBA board of directors, and the Commonwealth of Virginia, and where as the Fairfax County School Board joins the Virginia School Board's Association in recognizing the many and varied contributions to the school board clerks. Now therefore be it resolved that as meeting on the eighth day of March 2018, the Fairfax County School Board officially recognizes our three clerks with appreciation for their hard work to support each of us as well as our numerous school board meetings. We extend our sincere gratitude to each of you for making our jobs easier and more manageable, and we would be lost without you. I so move.
As a second?
I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. We are very grateful to our clerks, and I think sometimes the community doesn't quite appreciate the tremendous work that is required by the Code of Virginia, by the clerks. They keep our records, make sure that we all comply with the many, many requirements of the state and the county. They are gracious with the community to make sure that our community receives the support that they require, a lot of patience and a lot of professionalism. So, with that, I would like to invite our wonderful three clerks to come and join us
That's because you balance us out. Right in the middle. Right in the middle. (Laughter) 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 (Laughter)
The next item on our agenda is citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. I'm sorry. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with a decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home. So, language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. Our first speaker is Parker Brown. Is Parker Brown here? Okay, our next speaker is Charlotte Wright.
Thank you. Good evening, school board members. Thank you for having me and allowing me time to speak at your meeting. I am here because I attended my first board meeting on Thursday, February 22, where the Resolution on Gun Violence Prevention was passed. While I commend the board for passing this resolution, I feel like this was not a real action that directly addresses protecting our faculty and students within Fairfax County Public Schools. A forum topic at your last meeting introduced by board member Elizabeth Schultz piqued my interest as a parent of an elementary FCPS student because she mentioned wanting to discuss and implement more security measures within our schools, including the discussion of armed officers as a possible option. From my understanding, the board has approved her motion to discuss school security but was unwilling to consider the use of armed officers in that discussion. Why was that highly feasible security measure so quickly dismissed? I'm very confused by this motion and would like to understand the board's reasoning behind not wanting to discuss this option. Elementary schools remain the softest targets at the moment across our county. I understand my topic this evening was to discuss the replacement of the track at Chantilly High School, which I visited last night, by the way, and it just broke my heart seeing that a priority right now for the board is upgrading a perfectly good track instead of reallocating those funds, $375,000, towards something like upgrading security or perhaps enhancing the areas in which our students spend most of their days. There are over 800 module trailers, temporary classrooms, in our school district which offer little to no protection. I wrote the FCPS School Board an email on February 23 discussing my concerns related to school security. The only board member other than Elizabeth Schultz to respond to this inquiry was Tom Wilson, and he replied, "The board will review enhancements to school security at an upcoming meeting. We will almost certainly discuss having armed security in every school. Has this meeting occurred yet? I find it curious that we feel the need to have armed officers present at these board meetings, and yet they still remain absent at our vulnerable elementary schools. I urge everyone present to contemplate how seriously we are taking the security of our students. Where do our priorities lie, and are we doing enough? We are in much different times now from even when I was a student within Fairfax County Public Schools. I had never had to partake in a lock-down drill. Now it has become a quarterly drill for all of our students. Instead of preparing for an attack, shouldn't we focus on minimizing very real security risks? The faculty members I have spoken with agree that we need to see security enhancements at our schools ASAP. Fairfax County is rated 49th safest school district in Virginia while our neighbors in Arlington, Alexandria, and Loudon make the top five cut. I want to address this issue now before it is too late and we encounter a tragedy like Sandy Hook or Stoneman Douglas." I brought an option, a brochure to hand out of a shelter in place that I would like you guys to consider.
If you would like to share that with the clerks, they will see that we get it. Thank you. The next speaker is Matthew Ellsworth.
Chairman Strauss, is it possible at least to clarify for the audience and for the speaker that the board didn't take any option off the table? We've just asked our safety and security specialists to look at all of our safety measures and make any recommendations needed.
Yes, thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. We will be doing a full study of all options. The next speaker is George Beceras.
Good evening, Chairman Strauss, school board members, and Dr. Brayben. I wanted to talk about three issues tonight, but I guess I'm going to have only time for two. The first one is what the lady had mentioned earlier about topic on the gun resolution. I wanted to talk more specifically on the decorum of the board during that discussion period. I'd like to apologize to school board member Tom Wilson. I thought it was very disrespectful of the time that you interrupted. Of all the years that I've seen someone speak from the dais, you interrupted 12 times. I looked at the video, not two or three times, but 12. I expect a little bit more forcefulness in making sure that the audience knows that the rules, maybe that it needs to be said at the beginning of the remarks or passed out at the beginning. Give you a comparison, if you'd have done this to the board of supervisors, first time Chairman Bulova would say, "Call to order." Second time, the police come, who are uniformed and ununiformed, to remove the folks. So, let's keep it consistent. I might not agree with your statements or your logic, but I have to respect the position that you hold. End of the story. Also, in terms of the organizations that were here, I'm not criticizing the individuals, I'm criticizing the... Latinos were arrested. Last time I heard, it was 25% Hispanics in the system, 10% blacks. That's total 35%. So it's right on line with the average. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is John Delong.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak with, before you tonight. I'm following Superintendent Braybrand's instructions that I'm supposed to first tell you what you're doing right and then take the opportunity to make some suggestions. So I would like to give credit and thanks to Ms. Palczuk, Ms. Kiesgahmara and Mr. Moon for coming out to a meeting about marshal-related concerns last week. Thank you to all of them. I can't find Mr. Moon. I guess he's out for the moment. I attended the audit committee also last week and was pleased to hear the Auditor General's report on the synergistics contract. This contract has issues, some serious issues, including many thousands of adjustments to be resolved, but it was clear that resources and commitments are being made to protect FCPS from inappropriate charges going forward. I have raised concerns about FCPS contracting practices to all of you by letter and have received assurances that the commitment to transparency and accountability will be realized in contracts management. I look forward to the day when the public and administration can see all of the contracts, when sole source, non-compete contracts are open to review and competition, and when we have full faith that FCPS monies are being spent on services that are offered at the best prices and overseen to be provided efficiently. This objective of instituting best practices must also be adopted in the management of ERFC funds. I think I'm probably well-known for having brought this up over and over, but we're still spending almost double what the county spends on managing our investment funds. It's $6 million a year. If you can't find a way to use $6 million, I'd like it back in my pocket. I don't understand really why this is happening, but I have a suggestion to the new ERFC fiduciary members from the leadership team, and I appreciate the opportunity to address them tonight, to suggest a simple question, which is, "Why is ERFC paying fees that are not best-in-class?" I, I don't have the answer to why that can't be done. And we're paying fees that are close to double what the county is paying. So I encourage you to ask the rest of the folks on the ERFC board and the management team at ERFC why this is happening. A focus on benchmarking all of FCPS's activities against best-in-class governance practices will go a long way to helping us ensure that FCPS has resources and, most importantly, the trust and respect of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Don Bitner.
Good evening, school board members. Appreciate the time to take, that you can take tonight to hear a couple of words from me on a, on an issue that you've already been exposed to. Two points of emphasis I'd like to make tonight in regards to split feeder schools, specifically the Rolling Valley Elementary School, split feeder situation. The first point I want to make is just recall the, the testimonies from the children that came before you, as well as the parents on, who are impacted by those split feeder situations. I think that's a very important point of emphasis, as I also am putting into context the, this is 16 to 18 students that matriculate, matriculate per year. Acknowledge that this situation happens across a lot of different school district, school boundaries. So I, I also want to take a, take the time to also delve into some data that we've gathered as parents, concerned parents, both from our students' welfare and fiduciary concerns across the county. In particular, the busing situation seems to be a little off-kilter. For, like I said, these 18, about, let's say maximum of 18 students per year, about 36 students were busing in, were utilizing about three buses within this split feeder situation. The first bus is a single bus that goes to a bus stop, picks up a couple students from different, different areas, but at the end of the day, it's really an underutilized bus. It's under the 75% that facilities decide, tries to fill it up. Second bus, students have to get to the bus stop by 6:33 a.m. for a 7:30 start time. Seems a little early for me, but keep that in mind as we move along for middle school. The last bus again is, is about four bus stops, but underutilized by the time it goes through those four bus stops. I, I just implore you to consider these type of things as we have a ready-made solution for the Rolling Valley situation. The, the students are supportive, the parents are supportive, and also I think it would be our, to the benefit of other split feeder situations to set a precedent that, that the school board is solving these problems one bite at a time. You can't eat the whole elephant in one try, so let's, let's take an opportunity to resolve it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Parker Brown here? Is Matthew Ellsworth here? Okay, thank you very much for those who came out to speak to us tonight. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed, oh, I'm sorry, we've missed Ms. Fedekanda. I always do that. It ends up at the bottom of the page. So before we go to the consent agenda, I will call on Ms. Fedekanda for Student Representative Matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first, I'd like to start out by recognizing all the Boy Scouts in the audience. If you could please stand and be recognized. I know Troop 869 is here tonight. And like many of our Boy Scouts who are civilly engaged through the citizenship and the community badge, in the past few weeks, we've seen our students, especially at the high school level, energized to act on a variety of issues, and many of our students are more politically engaged now than they've ever been. And while we sat here two weeks ago just to express our support for our students' rights to express their opinions, I think it's critical that we establish more clear guidelines about what our students are and aren't allowed to do when they're organizing these activities. There have been some posts about what students' rights are in the school system in more of an abstract sense, but several students have approached me in the last few weeks with different, although school-specific concerns that I think stem from a single issue, the lack of a specific procedure to govern student-designed walkouts, protests and other activities that take place during the school day. I know our objective is to mitigate the influence of those activities on instructional time while making sure that our students are still able to participate, and I think in order to do that, we need to be completely transparent with our students and provide clear and specific guidelines for our student advocates, such as when they're allowed to schedule these activities, having students sign up with their student government to participate, designating a meeting location outside of the school building for a walkout, and provisions for inviting speakers to events. If we can create these specific guidelines that clearly indicate what students are allowed to participate in, we're going to be much better able to help students conduct their protests and walkouts in a way that doesn't take away from the learning environment or student safety. None of our students want to interfere with the school day in a disruptive manner. They would just like a fair way for them to be able to express their opinions. I would be more than happy to provide more input on like specific regulations that can be in place so that our students and administrations know what the parameters of student-led activities will look like. And as our students become ever more focused on political engagement, I think it's really important for us to provide the opportunities for our students to engage with local, state and federal government. And that means our civics curriculum, both at the middle school and high school level, needs to be focused on empowering our students to create change in their communities, whether that be through learning how to call a legislator or even speaking during our citizen participation segment. At the high school level, I want to, I want for us to be collaborating with the Fairfax County Government so that all of our high schoolers are able to register to vote as soon as they're old enough. I know we had ours this Monday, and while I'm a little few weeks shy of the deadline, it was really nice for all of my peers to be able to register. I'm so proud of the energy I've seen from my peers in the past few weeks, and I'm really looking forward to seeing how we as a school board can empower our students to achieve the change they're striving towards.
Thank you. Now it is time for the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01, approve the minutes of the February 22nd, 2018 regular school board meeting. 6.02, award the contract for the running track replacement at Chantilly High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Baynon Sports Services, Inc., in the amount of $375,720. And authorize the division superintendent or assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. New business. I will call on Dr. Braybrand for the introduction of the FY18 third quarter budget review presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss. Tonight, our new assistant superintendent for financial services, Lee Burden, will present the third quarter budget review. I think, is this the first day or second day? First day, so we've got her busy at work, but we've already had meetings together. We've had an exciting day together in Fairfax County Public Schools. And I'm just so excited. She's bringing energy and already new ideas, pushing me to think about things differently. We will be having a work session next week where, where you can get your questions answered on this review. But I just wanted to say again, it's just an honor to have Lee with us, and she's going to do a great job tonight and for the years ahead here in Fairfax County Public Schools. So, Lee, take it away.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Braybrand. The third quarter review offers an opportunity to revise the fiscal 18 budget based on current year trends and new requirements that have become known or requested since the mid-year budget review approved on December 14th of 2017. The agenda item is organized with descriptions of the recommended changes, followed by updated fund statements. And once the third quarter is approved by the school board, it is forwarded to the county for inclusion in their third quarter review packet for any necessary supplemental appropriations for FCPS. And the data in the report is as of the end of December. For the school operating fund revenue on page one, there are two changes. The annual adjustment for national board certified teachers proposed at third quarter each year is a $240,000 reduction in revenue from the Commonwealth as the actual number of teachers receiving national board certification was less than was budgeted. And just so you know, this stipend is pass-through funds paid for by the Commonwealth. It's paid $5,000 for the first year and $2,500 for each subsequent year. And we have a total of 470 teachers who are national board certified, or about 3%. The other change is a slight increase in IDEA parent resource center revenue of $8,000 for a new grant award. As you probably know, IDEA is not in the grant fund, it resides in the operating fund. And displayed on page two is the school operating fund expenditure changes which mirror the revenue changes. On page three, you can see the summary, which shows 232,000 in revenue and expenditures, leaving no additional funds available for allocation to the fiscal 19 beginning balance. Also on page three is the fiscal 19 beginning balance summary. As you know, we ended up with 24.2 million from fiscal 17 budget to fund the beginning balance for fiscal 19. As we get more accurate in our budgeting, the fund balance at the end of the year is reduced, as evidenced by the chart on page three, showing that that fund balance as a percentage of the total is less than 1% slated for fiscal 19. At this time, we believe the best option is to defer consideration of any one-time needs until year-end. This will allow the school board to consider and prioritize any major maintenance, strategic plan investments and beginning balance needs for fiscal 20. On page four and five are changes to other funds. The school construction fund, which is 189.3 million, that's both revenue and expenditures, and that's recognition of the 15 and 17 bond referendums. It's a variety of projects, capacity enhancements at Marshall, renovation planning at the Northwest County Elementary Schools, and then renovation construction at Oakton High School, Rocky Run Middle School and Mountain Vernon and Bellevue Elementary Schools. Food and nutrition services receives, is going to receive some startup funds to increase breakfast participation. That's about .1 million. Adult and community ed, a grant, also about .1 million that is for adult ed. It's an adult ed and family literacy grant. There are no change, the grants are going up 1.6 million, and that's grant awards, so the revenue and the expenditures offset. There are no positions in those grant increases. And then there are no changes to the summer school sub-fund, school insurance, which is workers' comp and risk management, health and flexible benefits, the ERFC fund or OPEB. Thank you for the opportunity to present the fiscal 18 third quarter. The work session to discuss this in greater detail is, I think, scheduled for Thursday, March 15th.
Great, thank you very much. We have several board members who have clarified questions. Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to go back to the national board certified teacher item, because I've already had an email from a teacher who is concerned about this, and I want to make sure that I understand and can explain exactly what it is. So this is funding that comes from the state per teacher, and we have less coming from the state because we have fewer teachers going through the process. Am I correct?
Less coming from the state because we have less that are, that became certified and are eligible for the stipend.
Okay, so it's not-
Less than we assumed in the budget.
Right. So the difference is just because we don't have as many teachers who qualify for the stipend, is that right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen, and then Ms. Schultz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just on that same issue, you know, every year when we do the national board certification ceremony, we have the teachers come to us and tell them that, you know, they, they're doing this really out of their own desire for professional development, and if not, also for the goodness, out of the goodness of their heart, to be better educators for their students. But, you know, we always hear the complaint that we are not doing as much as we should as a system to, to pay for that certification and the various funds that are needed to, to engage in that. And so I think as a board, we, we have to keep that in mind when we talk about that program. I'm sure we'll have our, our ceremony again in a few months and we'll hear the same plea. So if we ever get in a position where we can put more funding to that program, I think we should. Another ancillary issue that, that was raised was the, the ACE funding. And now that we're at the third quarter budget review, knowing that we have had issues with this program running in the red the past couple of years, I would be grateful, Lee, if you could bring us some information about where the funding of that program stands for this fiscal year to our budget work session, because I do believe the board should be aware of that, the status of that program for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, to clarify, you would like information at our work session on, on March 15th. It will be-
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen, and then Ms. Schultz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just on that same issue, you know, every year when we do the national board certification ceremony, we have the teachers come to us and tell them that, you know, they're doing this really out of their own desire for professional development, and if not, also for the goodness, out of the goodness of their heart, to be better educators for their students. But, you know, we always hear the complaint that we are not doing as much as we should as a system to pay for that certification and the various funds that are needed to engage in that. And so, I think, as a board, we have to keep that in mind when we talk about that program. I'm sure we'll have our ceremony again in a few months, and we'll hear the same plea. So, if we ever get in a position where we can put more funding to that program, I think we should. Another ancillary issue that was raised was the ACE funding. And now that we're at the third-quarter budget review, knowing that we have had issues with this program running in the red the past couple of years, I would be grateful, Lee, if you could bring us some information about where the funding of that program stands for this fiscal year to our budget work session, because I do believe the board should be aware of the status of that program for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. So, again, to clarify, you would like information at our work session on March 15th. It will be, okay? Great, thank you. Ms. Schultz?
Just to clarify on that point, I do think that there's a certain amount of funding that we're required to provide in order to obtain the grants, so...
Those for ESOL services?
I'm sorry?
For ESOL.
But under ACE, there's going to be, there's a certain amount of offset. If I recall, I think it's $400,000, but maybe we can have a clarifying figure on Monday. I have two areas, there'll be more on Monday, but two items. Where do we stand on our funding reimbursement from the federal government for military children? And I just heard prior to this meeting tonight, something that may be, and I don't know the details of it, but right off the bat, I'm not particularly happy about it. I hear that the governor may be signing something tomorrow that permits a military child to be pupil placed anywhere within a district. And we don't know the details on it, it's just getting, you know, filtered down, but knowing that we're already not reimbursed, I mean, there's a huge deficit between what we should be receiving from the federal government and what we're not, and headed into, you know, this budget cycle, I'd like to have a clarification on that. Do you happen to have any idea?
Are you talking about impact aid?
The impact aid for the military.
Right. No, but that is something that we can certainly get some information and provide it at the work session.
Yeah. That has to become part of our very vocal narrative, because basically, I think, as a part of these quarterly presentations, we actually should show some of the stuff that's in the red, like people who owe us money. So, that, part of the reason, you know, our ending balances aren't what they could be is because you, and you, and you owe us money. And so, I'd like to see that, because I think that there's some accountability that needs to be discussed for what's coming in, because right now taxpayers are already shouldering 78% of our budget. The second is the status of the classroom funding that we had set aside to defray overcrowded classrooms. That was, you know, something that we had set aside money in our budget. I know it was gone at some point prior to this, but it wasn't in the second-quarter review, and it's not in the third-quarter review, and so, at some point, that money evaporated. And I'd like to know basically what the burn rate of that is, and what the status is between that available funding that we've set aside versus the obligation that we made, which is, we're not going to have kids in overcrowded classrooms. And, you know, we're showing ending balances, but yet we have unmet obligations to promises that we've made now. And so, that's, again, sort of another deficit that I would like us to show, and I don't expect that you necessarily have an answer right now.
Well, are you talking about the staffing reserve and the 20 positions that were allocated in addition to the other 400 and some?
The staffing reserve positions that were, the amount that was specifically, that we talked about for the overcrowded classrooms.
Well, my understanding is that the 20 positions were added to the fiscal '18 budget, and that the staffing reserve currently stands at zero, that those positions were allocated in '18 to deal with, you know, fluctuations in enrollment, class sizes that were too high.
I understand that, but the burn rate of when those 20 positions were used up versus there are outstanding obligations, because there are overcrowded classrooms now. So, 20 wasn't enough, and if 20 wasn't enough, when did the 20 get used up, and what's the deficit to the existing overcrowded classrooms, such that when we get to a third quarter and a fourth quarter year-end, I don't think that we can apply necessarily all of that to a rule for beginning balance, because we have unmet obligations in the existing current fiscal year. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, I'm just going to summarize that, because this will come up at the work session for tonight. But it is the staffing reserve and the, because part of, and I know that I have spoken to Mr. Smith about this as well, as we prepare for the next budget year, we need to see what the staffing reserve needs are going to be, because there is concern about the burn through it. So, the staffing reserve issue, impact aid, and the information that we have just received tonight about a bill being signed by the governor that could have an unusual impact on our Fort Belvoir schools. So, those are topics that I think we will want more answers to at the next work session. Ms. Strauss?
Yes, yes. Just because I've been having some conversations about this recently, the, I believe, $100,000
additional grants for the breakfast program, I was just wondering if we could get an update of where that is. I know we have the hot breakfast program, and some schools have had, I think it's the second chance, the kind of grab-and-go bag, and if we could get sort of an update of where those $100,000 are headed, and where our schools are in terms of implementing...
Yes, we can get some detailed information about that grant for the work session.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other clarifications? Okay, seeing none, we will look forward to a robust discussion on the third quarter and other budget issues.
Thank you.
The next work session. Thank you very much. And I've just received an update that perhaps that, okay, the state bill that has to do with potential impact for Fort Belvoir evidently is still in flux, still being discussed, so...
It's not tied to Fort Belvoir.
Right.
It is about the ability of moving students around, and that's still being addressed.
Okay, so that's still up in the air, but we need more information. Okay. New business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01, approve revenue and expenditure changes reflected in the FY 2018 third-quarter budget review is detailed in the agenda item. 7.02, award the contract for the rooftop and air handling unit replacements at Shreve Wood Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.03, award the contract for the auditorium HVAC replacements at Stewart High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Next on the agenda is superintendent matters. I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you Chairman Strauss. Well, I got to tell you, every week in Fairfax is an interesting week, and this past week was challenging and interesting, to say the least. We believe it is the first time in FCPS history that we had a weather closing due to wind. We'll see if more students will be putting fans by my office to see if I see blowing trees. But it really was the right decision to make. I know it is an impact to the community when we close schools, but the reality of that day, particularly as it progressed, made it clear that it was the safest thing to do for our students, and frankly, for our employees. We had 63 schools and facilities lose power on that Friday, and another 20 had trees that actually blocked access to our schools. So, it was a significant event. And we made the decision to close on Saturday and on Sunday, and yes, our buildings are used seven days a week, so that our facilities folks could get in our buildings freely to take on what was a Herculean effort to restore electricity power and get the grounds ready for staff and students to return. I am proud to say that we opened on Monday morning. We only had seven schools that we had to share out with the community that were, remained closed without power. It is a team effort. It requires our community and our parents and students' help, and our employees really went above and beyond. Marty Smith and Jeff Plattenberg and their staffs just worked under very difficult situations to restore normalcy to FCPS. So, I want to thank them, and let's give them a big applause for all of our facilities and maintenance folks. Oh, and actually, Francine is here, too, and Francine was on these calls with us and helping us provide guidance, and really, we worked really collaboratively with the county to find out places where roads had been blocked so that we could reroute bus transportation routes on Monday. And the level of collaboration going on between the schools and county is deeper and broader than it's ever been before, and it really helped us get back up to speed and make sure we could pick up kids on time. I also already said, I'm excited to have Lee Burden with us. It was our first Fairfax County school board meeting today. I thought you did an outstanding job, Lee, and we're really, again, proud to have you here, excited to have you here, and know that you'll be able to answer all those board questions that were shared today. Piece of cake. Again, thank you so much for all of your support during the last several weeks. We've had a lot going on in terms of safety and security, in terms of weather, but I'm really, really proud of all of our staff and students for continuing to come in each day focused on good instruction and good teaching and learning, and the conditions for that to happen, because that is what the school system's first and primary responsibility is. And we're looking forward to March to, March came in like a lion, we want it to go out like a lamb, and before you know it, it's going to be spring break for our students. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Board reports. I call on Ms. Hines for an audit committee update, and then Ms. Schultz for an update on Comprehensive Planning Development Committee.
Yes, thank you. The school board's audit committee met on February 28th, and we received reports from the auditor general on staffing update, the status of internal audit engagements. We also had some audit reports, one on the synergistics contract review, one on private transportation, and business process turnover audits on two of our schools. Next audit committee meeting will be April 25th.
Ms. Schultz, your committee report.
Sure, and we had a comprehensive planning and development committee meeting, at which we covered kind of the future of CPDC in light of particularly the $25 million CIP enhancement, and potentially some of the things that we could be doing differently on CPDC to be a little bit more proactive, since we don't have an infrastructure, a joint infrastructure committee. The plan is, at the next meeting, that there be some recommendations from the respective board members, including Fairfax City, on some of those, and that a recommendation will come forward to the board as a result of that. In addition, we will have two openings on our facilities and planning advisory committee, and we have worked with the clerk of the board, and the advertisement for those two positions will go out next week. It'll be open for 30 days, then input of the respective board members who have those openings, and with the plan that FPAC will, in combination with the board members, bring to CPDC a recommendation, and we will bring back a recommendation to the full board by the end of May for those two new members, so they'll be ready to start June and July.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Board matters will begin with Ms. Taryn Kofix.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to begin by thanking my colleagues and Dr. Braybrand and the board clerks for your hard week at our retreat two weeks ago. It's extremely important that we have that time together where we discuss our priorities and objectives, and see how we can improve our communication strategies, and I thank you for that. Also, I do want to thank our board clerks just for your hard work and your dedication. We could not do it without you, and we appreciate you so very much, not just this week, but all throughout the year. Thank you so much. I have been busy in the community meeting with schools. I've met with several of my high schools, including Lee High School, Edison High School, and West Potomac, as well as meeting with Key Middle School. So, I love that time where I get to see the principals and teachers and students, and I'm sorry that, due to weather, we had Read Across America canceled, but I'm hoping to reschedule some of those opportunities. And I know we have, right now, a lot of schools in playoff situations with basketball. I know one of my girls' teams made a valid effort at Edison High School, and unfortunately, they lost this afternoon, but I wish well all of those schools that are still out there in tournament play. And also, it is theater and music in our schools. We have so many amazing opportunities. I have that listed in my last newsletter, what opportunities are available in the Lee District schools, and I'm sure you all have that in yours as well. So, it's a wonderful thing that we provide our students as an extracurricular that can possibly even turn into a career for them. So, please go out and support the arts in our schools this next month.
Ms. Schultz?
So, I ask your indulgence. I, too, have been busy in the community. First, I want to say congratulations to the Northern Virginia Football Hall of Fame, attended on Sunday evening, and the highlight, and I don't see Mr. Curran here this evening, but the highlight of the work, yeah, oh, the highlight of the work that our staff is doing in collaboration with the youth football leagues in making football a safe sport, in collaboration with also the Heads Up Football Program that was piloted here by USA Football, and in collaboration with our coaches, was phenomenal. But in particular, Coach Price, who was inducted into the Hall of Fame, was, is a Westfields coach, and was a Lake Braddock coach of renowned fame, and his impact on youth. Luke Boenko, who was a Centerville High School graduate from my district, went on to UVA, was drafted by the NFL, and played for the Jacksonville Jaguars and the Baltimore Ravens, and just became, right before the Hall of Fame dinner, became a free agent, and his impact for the youngest players. And Kyle Simmons, who was coach of the year from Westfields, won his amazing three-peat. There are so many other football players that were acknowledged, all the way down to, you know, fourth grade and 10 years old, and even the cheerleaders were highlighted. Charlie Salet, Charlie Salet from Centerville High School, won a $2,000 scholarship for college. So, just an amazing set of volunteers, and officials, and supporting organizations that have a tremendous impact on youth in, throughout Northern Virginia, but particularly in Fairfax. I also want to acknowledge the schools. I've been very busy, and in some respects with Ms. McLaughlin, for the high schools that we share. My student town halls have been active. Been to Chantilly, South County, Lake Braddock, and West Springfield, and truly continues to be one of the very best things that I do. We've talked everything about, from Parkland, and how they feel, and how they feel about lockdown drills and additional security measures, to fidelity in grading practices, to homework loads, student stress, opioid and drug impact on our students. So, I'm very thankful to the leadership teachers in each of those schools, and to the students for having very forthcoming conversations with us. I think it helps make me a better public servant and a better policymaker. West Springfield Civic Association, I appreciate the invitation to speak with you last evening and discuss the budgetary impact, and for all, that's the exposure to, frankly, many people who don't have children in our public schools, and draw the correlation to the economic development and value of our schools to those homeowners and those taxpayers that make up the 75% of our residents who don't have children in the schools. And then finally, a special visit to Boys Probation House, and the staff there in our alternative programs, our inter-agency programs. A very, very valuable conversation with them on how the impact of what we do as board members and policy is affecting them, and their, some of their future developments. And then a visit to, another visit to the Juvenile Detention Center, and Principal Shaver. And I very much want to thank the superintendent of the JDC for allowing a news camera, it was the first time they'd ever allowed a news camera into JDC, and we went through some hurdles to make it happen. But they feel very much that sometimes there's images in film, or, you know, that, you know, JDC is a place where people have brass knuckles, and, you know, people's heads are being cracked open, and it's a place to really bear down on, you know, horrible individuals, and these are minor children, and sometimes it's very, very difficult things that they're dealing with, or that they have committed themselves. dealing with or that they have committed themselves. But we have a school there and they become children again and students again. And this program with Caring Angels that brings in therapy dogs is a truly amazing program. They show up in some of our schools, our regular schools, but to see the path of young people, predominantly boys, who are in grievous circumstances frankly, some of them, get outside of themselves and maybe focus on something else for, for a little bit was, I think, a beneficial thing to show and I'm very appreciative for them to create that opportunity.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, much as I have enjoyed this evening with you all, I could have been somewhere else tonight and I want, I apologize for not being at the Hunter Mill Budget Summit tonight at South Lakes High School. It was scheduled tonight, which didn't really help, but I understand that there was someone from the Finance Office who went over to help present the school side of this budget, the county budget. So, I really appreciate very much. I'm sure that you all did a better job than I would have anyway, so thank you. Also, you know, thanks to Supervisor Hudgens for her partnership in the county. She's my counterpart on the county board and, and as you know, the county board decides how much funding we have, so it's a very important partnership and I appreciate that. Every year, she goes out into the community and invites the schools to come along and present a joint budget conversation with the community. So, I appreciate that. And, you know, I think the partnership between Superintendent Braybrand and the New County Executive is reflective of a strong partnership that we want to continue to, to build here. So, sorry I couldn't be there tonight. I will get a full report.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Apologies to my colleagues on the board. Earlier this evening, right after the closed meeting, then I had to rush out to Fairfax County Government Center on a client matter and so I missed most part of the regular meeting. I'm so sorry about that. But I was happy to join Mr. McElvin and Mr. Schurz at the Northern Virginia Football Hall of Fame on Sunday and I was honored to be at the same table with a young man from South Lakes who was one of the High School Player of the Year and he is gonna be playing for Yale. I wasn't so thrilled about it, but I'm happy for him though. With that, that I am rooting for South County boys playing in the championship game even as we speak in Richmond. Unfortunately, earlier at the six o'clock game, Landy Girls also lost in overtime by two points, but they had a great season though, along with the Edison Girls.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you. I just want to give a shout out and a thank you to all those who attended my Town Hall meeting a couple of weeks ago. And a special shout out to you, Dr. Braybrand and Dr. Dade on working with me in the follow-up items for that meeting and look forward to having a community meeting at Fort Belvoir next Tuesday. Really appreciate the collaboration. I know that the families are looking forward to that. Also want to thank the staff at Quander Road School for hosting an incredible Black History Month event where Mr. Ruliman Quander presented his living history of his family and their contributions to not only Fairfax County's history, but Virginia's history, which is America's history. And it was a special moment for me to be back at my elementary school to hear a family member of a family that I have grown up with. So, it was a great experience and really appreciate it. Want to also thank the Mount Vernon Council of Civic Associations who are really working together to explore the impact of Embark Richmond Highway, which is the economic development efforts on the Richmond Highway corridor and how they will impact our schools. And to the Mount Vernon Lee Chamber of Commerce, a shout out for the work that they are doing on strengthening ties between the business community and our school system. They were very appreciative today of Dr. Braybrand's presentation, so thank you to Dr. Braybrand for that. And inviting people to come to the Budget Town Hall that Supervisor Stork and I will be hosting on the 19th of March. I really appreciate the work and the collaboration between the school board and the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. McElvin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Moon, I, we all thought you had gone down to the hospitality room at the state basketball championship. But the truth is, both you and I and Ms. Schultz also, I'm sure, would have greatly wished we could be down at VCU and rooting for our, our team and, and Ms. Corbett Sanders, of course. But the truth is, Mr. Moon has never met a hospitality room that he doesn't like, so maybe next year. As everyone knows, today is International Women's Day and you will see the white roses that have been gifted to our, my colleagues. And if you need any proof that the future is female, you just have to look at this board and also to listen and see all of our active students, female students in Fairfax County Public Schools who continue to make their voices heard on many important issues. It is, you know, a great honor to serve with such strong and passionate women on whom, with whom sometimes I may disagree, but thank you all for your service and for your commitment to the community. I would just like to remind my colleagues that we have a great deal of reading to do for Monday's all-day work session. We will be, be starting with the work sessions with a discussion of sexual assault and harassment, which has been long, long awaited. And following that, we will discuss our strategic plan reprioritization efforts and that is likely to be a very long discussion and there is a lot of work that we need to do in advance of that. So, I wish everyone a wonderful weekend.
Ms. Palchak?
Yes, thank you. Well, following on Mr. McElvin's, I'm glad our message was a little different. For International Women's Day, I wanted to honor the 38 women who now represent us in the Virginia General Assembly, often known as the oldest continuous lawmaking body in the world, from its beginning years in Jamestown. It is now, while only 27%, getting us closer to better representing women in Virginia. So, I want to congratulate them as they come very close to the end, some of them, many, to the end of their first session in, down in Richmond. Beyond that, I want to also thank all who came out to my office hours this Saturday, from the Cub Scout troops to parents who share their concerns about safety for our students. And I want all of you to know, and I think we all share this on our board and our Superintendent, that it is the number one priority of our, of our system is to ensure the safety of our students. So, we know those, the issues are raised and we want to reassure you, as Ms. McLaughlin shared earlier, that we are and our staff are looking at our current practices and looking at any, anything we can do that makes sense to enhance our practices. So, we want to make sure that message is very clear we share with you and we know that these are troubling times for that. Beyond that, I wanted to thank Congressman Byer, it's been a long week, for including me in his Latino Leaders Meeting. I think it is enlightening and helpful as we have one of the highest percentages, a number of Latinos in our community, that we come together as leaders and that he brought us together to share our thoughts and concerns. I also want to share, although they didn't quite make it to states, the Marshall Girls had an incredible season and it was wonderful to be there and to stand, jump through that nail-biting regional finals that they won this year. Finally, moving for upcoming events, I will be joining Supervisor Smith on March 14th at the Providence Community Center for our annual joint budget meeting hosted by the Providence District Council. That is next Wednesday, March 14th, at the Community Center and we will also be joined by staff from both the county and from our financial services. And last but not least, this year on March 22nd in the morning, the Marshall Academy will be hosting a Criminal Justice and Public Safety Career Fair, open to the public, and that is March 22nd, I believe, from nine to noon in the morning. So, with that being said, we are getting close to spring break. I know it's a tough time for us teachers and kids in the classroom, so just remember spring is close, but keep up your studies, keep up your sleep, and take care of each other. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I first want to thank my colleague, Mr. McElvin, for honoring us today on International Women's Day. It's really a moment, I think, for a lot of us here, especially in the United States, to not only appreciate the incredible freedoms that we get to enjoy in this country, but to think about the women around the world and how important it is to keep raising awareness and really hoping for the day when women around the world will get to enjoy what we are so blessed to have here in the United States. A couple of things that I wanted to kind of share with my colleagues and the community. I had mentioned that over the President's Weekend, one of our very own Woodson seniors had basically created an original musical called Loyal Hearts. It was about King Henry VIII and Anne Boleyn and he ended up getting private funding and employed 50 student volunteers to put on this incredible production, the set design, the costumes, the stellar vocal performances, along with the remarkable orchestra. It was just outstanding, almost full to capacity, over, you know, eight, 900 to 1,000 students and community members there. At each one of the performances, this young man had been recognized by the Los Angeles Theater as a semifinalist in their national competition of, of young, young theater individuals. And so, it was just really incredible to see the community come together in support of his, his remarkable work. The other thing I wanted to share is that over the weekend where the board had its retreat, we also, many of us had the good fortune of being able to go to the NAACP's Black History Month Celebration and 100th Anniversary of the Fairfax County Chapter of the NAACP, for where our colleague Sandy Evans was honored for her incredible and very challenging work in, in bringing forward an issue of concern with the community and the Jobstewart renaming. And so, it was, it was really special to see Sandy get honored for what was certainly a very difficult but tireless effort on her part. And so, it was a privilege to see that. And I stayed through and was able to watch the Herndon Middle School step dance team and they were just incredible. I don't know if my colleagues who represent Herndon Middle School have seen it before, but this was my first time and it was really remarkable, what a talented, talented group of individuals. And the other thing that the board did receive this week was a letter from the NAACP chapter, Concerns About Student Discipline and charges that get filed with our juvenile court system here in Fairfax. And it was also referenced by one of our speakers this evening. And I just felt it was important to make mention because I do know that this board and also our board supervisors, from the inception of the successful Children Youth Policy Team, SKEP, that looking at disproportionality and disparities in student discipline and especially where we see disproportionality based on race is a focus and a concern and it is something that the board takes seriously. But I think it's also extremely important as public officials that we have to continue to ensure that there is a very robust examination of data and especially when data comes only in a one-year snapshot, it's really important from a research perspective that you have to be able to, to look and identify what it's going to tell you. But anytime you see disparities, that's a red flag, that you've, you've got to dig deeper and I think this board is committed to it. And then finally, I just wanted to make my colleagues aware that Supervisor Pat Harity has brought together a sports tourism task force that he brought to the board supervisors for a request and it was approved. And so, because of my work on the turf task force, he had asked me to serve on that. And so, the goal here is that we're trying to not only enhance recreational services here in Fairfax County, but just as important is having Fairfax County become a destination place for sports tourism. And especially when we are looking for ways to broaden the revenue options in this county beyond constantly raising property tax rates. This is really kind of an exciting thing to look at ways in which Fairfax County can enhance its offerings for the community. And so, that report, I believe, is probably going to be forthcoming late spring. And again, it's something he's doing for the board supervisors, but once I have more information, gladly share it with all of you.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to everyone who came out to the Budget Town Hall that Kathy Smith and I hosted yesterday evening and thank you to the staff of Fairfax County Public Schools and the county for, of having representatives there that were very able to answer the questions that the community members brought. One question that came up a number of times, it wasn't a budget question, was echoed by one of our speakers tonight, was ongoing concerns about what Fairfax County Public Schools is doing to analyze and make changes now with regards to school safe, security. And just to confirm that we are in the process of completing a security review of our schools and we are going to consider all of the security options that, at our upcoming meeting, I don't know that a date is set for that. But I think I would urge my colleagues to, as we, as we move forward, to think about new expenditures, expenditures in particular and balancing them against the concerns that the community has, particularly parents. I know in my own household, my wife and I have had this conversation many times now about school security. What is, what the security issues might be at Oakton High School and at other schools in the county. And frankly, both conversations before the Town Hall and my conversations with citizens after the Town Hall concern security issues in our schools. So, I thank everyone for coming out and I'm really grateful that you brought the, that to our attention tonight as well. I also like to wish everybody, all the women on the school board, a very happy International Women's Day. I am embarrassed to say that I did not bring roses for you all, but please know that I do care deeply and wish all of you a wonderful International Women's Day. Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say that I was very honored and pleased to participate in the Fairfax NAACP's 100th Anniversary and their tribute to Black History Month. That was, it was a wonderful event that went on for several hours with some wonderful performances and a number of people were honored and we, we heard from a number of, we heard from Congressman Connolly and Chairman Bulova with some inspirational words, words as well as, as, as others as well. So, that was an excellent event and thank you for mentioning it, Ms. McLaughlin. This Saturday, I will be returning to discuss the budget with the Fairfax NAACP and presenting as Budget Chair for their March meeting. And I wanted to say thank you to Glenn Forrest for inviting me to participate in their Read Across America Day. That was a very fun morning to, to read to classrooms, some Dr. Seuss books. And lastly, I just want to congratulate Columbia Elementary, they're going to be having their 50th Anniversary and I'll be participating in that celebration in a couple of weeks. And last but not least, thank you, Mr. McElvin, for, for recognizing your female colleagues on the board. We appreciate you too.
Ms. Schultz?
And all the males on the board.
Ms. Schultz has a quick go-back?
I'm sorry, all the congratulations for the International Women's Day made me realize that I forgot something very important. I actually spent today at the White House with a group called the Global Women's Entrepreneurs as a part of the South Asia Youth Symposium. And it was a youth symposium largely centered on youth in technology and, and cybersecurity. I can't believe we had the I can't believe we had cybersecurity kids here, and I forgot. But youth from around the country, but predominantly from Maryland and from Virginia and some of our students. And I'm really grateful for their invite, it was actually an invitation from that group to participate with them and see them interact with government officials and ask very key questions. But again, everything from opioids and technology and how they can be influencers as young people, and predominantly the questions were asked by the girls. That was interesting. And the groups put on some wonderful dance displays as well, so I thank them all.
Thank you. I want to thank Dr. Braybrand for coming to the McLean Citizens Association for his presentation and answering questions. We had a, an excellent turnout and a, and a very good discussion. Thank you very much, Dr. Braybrand. I will be attending the Student Peace Awards this weekend. Students from 23 Fairfax County Public Schools have been named recipients of the 2018 Student Peace Awards. This is designed to recognize young people who work as peacemakers. So that should be very rewarding to, to meet with those young people. And I will also be attending a meeting Monday night with Mothers Demand Action, also with Rip Sullivan, Barbara Favola, again, to discuss school student safety and gun control. So with that, I believe this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.